Want to call the meeting to order if we could all rise for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. All of our board members are present tonight with the exception of Mr. Alexander. I'd like to announce that the board will have or hold an executive session immediately after tonight's meeting for negotiations. And I didn't receive any public comment forms, but if there are any, I will take them now. No? And with that, we will turn it over to Mr. Hannah from Dewey Engineering.
Sure. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. So I'm here for my monthly update to give you an update of where we are as of today and where things are moving in the future. So everything's pretty much been completed that was started in the summer. The cafeteria was used today. It was full.
Hallelujah.
Yes, hallelujah. I'm sure the students feel the same way.
Made it through.
Made it through. Oops. Somehow I lost it. There it is. Sorry. It's chubby fingers. So here's a couple views of the cafeteria. Can everybody see? I'm sorry. It looks better with students in it, too. Here's the serving area. I'll tell you, the food looked good in the serving area there. There's two bars there, as you know. One serves hot food. They're making pizza at this one. And then the library's been in use for several weeks. There's a circulation desk. There's the bookshelves, some study areas, and then there's a circulation desk as well. You can see your staffs in there working on it. And then there are several SGI rooms. This is one right where the main lobby was. There's another one at that location. Now, this one is in the corridor that heads down from 100 wing down to what's now the bus lobby. This one's right inside there. Now, this is pretty dark, but this is the TV studio. That's all set up and ready to go. Your bank is right here, and your school store is right here. Oops. Again, my chubby fingers. I apologize. Here's the bank. School store is there. Now, what's happening right now is the guidance addition, which is right over here. You can see the exterior is under construction, a lot of masonry. The brick veneer's been going up. On the inside, the fireproofing has been applied. The mechanical hangers right here are hanging down, which have to be installed prior to the fireproofing. So this is moving along pretty well. They're getting ready to put the glass in and make it totally watertight so they can work through the winter. The science addition, you can see it's closed in. A lot more masonry's been applied since this photo was taken, and some work's being conducted inside. So now, moving forward, the areas that are still yet to be done are the science wing here, this area in purple here, which is the existing gym, the old gym, which was the cafeteria, the auditorium, Mr. Ziegler's space, the main lobby, which is mainly terrazzo. That all gets a nice terrazzo, which I showed you previously. The guidance addition, and then, of course, the DAO. Sorry. My fingers are a little too chubby today. And the DAO. So this winter, there's not a lot occurring. So we've been exploring some other options of possibly trying to eliminate so much work over the coming summer. And some of the things we explored were taking some classrooms out of this area here and doing them this winter. So from early November till the beginning of the year. Your staff feels they can move some classrooms around, give those classrooms to the contractors. We could do them with little disruption to your programming, leave the corridors open so the students can get to the lockers. And we're in the process of working that right now. We'd get a firm schedule from the contractors that I would bring to you and present it to you if we wanted to do that. The other thing we were looking at is the DAO right here. And we're exploring taking that from you sometime in February because the contractors are telling us that it looks like they should give us the guidance addition mid to end of March. So we could move some staff into the guidance addition. Ms. Viola and her staff are looking for some other areas they can put some staff. And then we could take the DAO in March sometime and give it back to them before the summer. So those are things we're exploring. Of course, we got to get all the other contractors on board, come up with a firm schedule that we can approve, and it'd be a win-win situation for all of us. The main purpose of doing this is we have some good mechanics on site. If we don't find, if they don't have work, they're going to leave, and we may not got them back. But the other thing is, the most important thing is to take as much work off the next summer schedule as we can.
So you said the guidance, the guidance right there should be done end of February, beginning of March?
It's scheduled to be done by mid-March.
Mid-March.
And we'd ask them if they'd give it to us a little earlier.
Does that mean that that entrance, then, is going to be open in time for the end of the school year, or is that going to be...
That entrance won't be open.
Okay.
Yeah. That entrance won't be open.
All right. And this isn't new to me. When I toured the high school a couple of weeks ago, Mrs. Viola previewed it for me, pretty much everything you said, and I've had some time to think about it. So my first question is, how many classrooms would be affected by the early work in that brown area or tan area?
This area here?
Yes.
It would be one, two. We already have this classroom. This is the addition. We already have this classroom. So Mr. Ziegler would be giving up right now, he'd be giving up one, two, three, four, five. Five classrooms.
Jim, one of them's the faculty lounge, correct?
One of them's the faculty lounge, and that's over here.
No? Five instructional spaces.
Five instructional spaces. Yes.
Okay. So five instructional spaces. And when you say that the staff feels that they can accommodate it, which staff are we talking about? Are we talking about the five affected teachers as well as the administration?
Yeah. I deal with Mrs. Viola.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I understood what staff meant.
Yes.
We met today after the contractors met with Jim and Jeff Cardwell was at the meeting just to see what they were really thinking. They fleshed out a little bit further from, you know, what I mentioned to you. It was just today that we had this conversation. So the next step would be for them to actually show us. I said we wouldn't do anything without a change order, you know, documented change order to ensure that the timelines are tight. And then, obviously, we'd have to work with the high school, with Dr. Ziegler and staff to see where we'd move people. But we have some spaces, like the large group instructional spaces, the library classroom. That would be where we would be moving those teachers that would be affected. They'd be recently renovated. We also have a classroom on the 400 wing that, right now, has a lot of stuff in it. It's eventually going to be the STEM lab. And one of the things we were thinking is if we emptied that out and put that in the gymnasium in the corner, because, see, the gymnasium's not going to be done until March, then we can then move that again. And so that 400-room classroom, which is a nice space, could feasibly be used as an instructional space.
So when would we have to decide?
Pretty soon. I mean, I asked them for a tight plan before I would want to come back to the board.
Sure.
We might actually have to have a special meeting. And the reason that they're trying to expedite this now is because we have the Thanksgiving Day holiday, we have, you know, the winter break, and so it's going to be less instructional days impact. And I asked this morning, how long would it take to get this done? And they're looking at a couple of months. So if we can get it done sooner than later, then those two months aren't quite as many long instructional days, where it would be less of a disruption.
Well, I can tell you what I would like to see if we were to go forward with these ideas, because there's, obviously, three separate things that we talked about doing here. I'd like to see some sort of guarantee that they're going to get done before the start of school on time next year. Because the whole reason to do this is so that we don't have another delay, right?
It's a proactive measure to try to minimize the impact of delay, but you have to understand that we already know that there's probably going to be some lead remediation and some asbestos abatement. We already know because we found it in the first phase, Phase Three, I guess. It was Phase Three, but we found it. So we know there's going to be some issues, so we're trying to get some other stuff on the forefront here so that when we do have delays, but there's no way that we can, contractually, we have to negotiate with the contractors, the primes, and then we have to reestablish the schedule. And our methodology for doing this in consultation with our solicitor now is to be proactive about doing so immediately thereafter when we see that there's an issue, so that we can sure up the timeline and it's not dragged out longer than it needs to be.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm all in favor of moving ahead with this because anything that we can do to head off another start of school like this past year, we just, we can't have that.
It gives us more flexibility. I mean, last year, we really hit an obstacle, and we hit the lead in the cafeteria. That was, I mean, we lost almost 50 days because of that. So we know we're going to hit some lead in the DAO in here, probably, or unlikely, and some additional asbestos abatement. So doing these options gives us a little more flexibility.
Did you mention that we also have the auditorium?
Yes.
When you were pointing out things, that's a big amount.
I did. Yeah, we do have the auditorium.
And when is that?
That starts in June.
So with this plan, what would the remaining work be in the summer?
The remaining work in the summer would be the auditorium, Mr. Ziegler's space, this part of the science area, which is the labs. This part of the science area, which is the labs. We won't get into them. And then that's pretty much it, and some of the exterior work.
Finishing the gym. Right, once the gym, the gym's going to start in March.
That starts in March, but I believe that, I believe we give that back to you in June. I think that's in June. Yes.
And when is the turf field?
That starts this spring, and we give that back to you in August.
So now, because I know we've had this beautiful new music wing that has been partially full of stuff from other areas. So now that the library and the cafeteria is all finished, is that going to? No. We're still not going to be able to use those rooms.
There's a potential, well, the only room that they don't have right now is the second music room. They have the choir room and the band room.
Right.
We may need that other room. I mean, we're in construction, so we're just basically moving pieces around. So the end of next summer, then, that's what we want to have everything done, so you'd have the whole suite for music.
Okay. So they should expect, in the music suite, they should expect to have, basically, the orchestra room being used as storage until the end of...
I wouldn't say storage. I mean, we might very likely use it as an instructional space. I think that's what Dr. Ziegler's thinking. It's a nice classroom. So if we're going to move some of those teachers out of the science wing there, we're going to choose the best instructional spaces so that they're not in a space that's not conducive to educating students.
Okay.
That's a good space. The LGIs are good spaces.
So they're going to have...
The library classroom's a good space.
So they'll have a different, that'll be assigned to a different set of students, not the orchestra students?
Probably. Because we can still use the auditorium this year one more time, and there's only one class or two periods, one or two periods of that. We can't use up that room all day.
Okay.
Those other teachers that are going to be moving are social studies. They're teaching.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hannah.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move to the reporter superintendent.
I recommend that you approve the professional staff items as submitted.
Motion to second. Motion to second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the support staff items as submitted.
So moved. Are there any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the student-teacher assignment as submitted.
It's my alma mater, Valley Forge. Motion to second. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the conference attendance as presented.
Motion to second. Any questions from anyone or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Discussion items?
I just wanted to make mention of the fact that you probably got an invitation for the key communicators meeting. In working with Michael, we thought that at best, we spoke to a couple of our key communicators over the summer. They actually volunteered to come in and give us some feedback, and they really wanted us to open up. They liked some of the things that we're doing in key communicators. They'd like to get more people involved, to be able to learn more about the district. So we thought that we would have a key communicators meeting this fall, the first meeting, with that group one more time, not just the two of them, but the whole key communicators group, just to have more of a conversation around what we can do to better serve the community, with the intention that we would try to expand key communicators into learning for other, you know, for other people that might be interested in some of the things that we're doing, and perhaps offer something that we might call like Pasgros Parent University. So I don't know if some of you, I know, attended last year. We had a budgeting session where we had a game, and we were showing people how we build the budget. And some people might be interested in that. Perhaps they want to sign up for that session. At the same time, we could be having something on curriculum and instruction, on math. We could be having something with technology and showing parents, you know, what we're doing with our Dial initiative. That's kind of one of the ideas that we were tossing around so that we're serving as many people as possible. But we wanted that opportunity to talk with key communicators. So I invited all the board members that are sitting, and obviously, the board members that we think are going to be joining our board in the next few weeks, and then the current key communicators, so that we could just have a roundtable kind of conversation in November. So your invitation should have gotten, you should have gotten an email.
Committee reports?
I guess, policy. We went over a bunch of policies and didn't get through all of them. So I think we're going to discuss two more before we're done. We, hold on here. I'm very organized. We talked about substitute compensation. That was a discussion item. And determine, thank you, and determine that the, we're very competitive in terms of what we, how we compensate our subs, but we do have a area-wide shortage of substitutes. And we explored some ideas on what we can do to make sure that we have enough subs to cover our teachers' absences.
Especially when you have, you know, days like Friday where we had 25 callouts. It's very important we have a lot of subs to cover those classes.
And then, in addition to that, we talked about our virtual, a new virtual online learning policy, and we're going to get a new draft of that for the next policy committee. We talked about a revision of the bullying, cyberbullying policy, and we're probably going to get a new draft of that one as well, although I think it's close. And the two that we didn't talk about, maybe I should turn it over to Dr. Shirk to continue that discussion.
Thank you. The two policies that we have left to discuss, policy 627 is the post-insurance tax compliance procedures for exempt bonds. This is under the recommendation of Mark Davis from Fox Rothschild. Mr. Nestor was key in implementing this policy, working with Mark. So I would like to probably, I'm going to defer any questions to Dave since he's our financial expert on why we need to have this policy and be in compliance.
The concept of the policy is that when we issue bonds, we're making certain assertions that we're going to use it for the intended purpose, for a tax-exempt purpose. And the Internal Revenue Service is very interested in making sure that we follow those rules. And that's what they're requesting, this board policy to formalize the procedures that we're already, we already have in place. But there is a concept known as arbitrage in the financial industry. And what arbitrage is, is borrowing money at a low rate, investing it at a higher rate, and taking the profits. And certainly, that can't be done with tax-exempt bond issues. Given the, even though we are at incredibly attractive rates for borrowing, our investment opportunities are not at that level. So it's really difficult to qualify for arbitrage at this point in time. But the policy stipulates that it would be my responsibility, or whoever the business manager is at the time, to monitor the bonds, make sure we're spending them down appropriately quickly enough, and that if we do have excess in money invested, that we're not generating additional money beyond the interest rate we're being charged on the bonds. If we did, there's what's known as arbitrage rebate, and we'd have to write a check back to the federal government to compensate them for the lost revenue. Like I said, in today's market, very difficult for that to occur, even though we're at like a 2.5%, 3% borrowing rate, our investment rates. If we find 1.5%, we're dancing. So this just formalizes what we already do, and we're requesting that the board consider moving this forward as a policy.
And the language was worked out with Fox Rothschild?
Language was drafted by Fox Rothschild.
Well, it must be airtight, then.
Just, we're not looking for a motion on this tonight. This is a recommendation to the policy committee. And just so we're clear and the public knows that these policies will be put on the, the ones that we move forward will be put on the website for review. And then they come back to the policy committee before they're approved by the board, just so we're clear on the process.
They need to stay for 30 days and then come back.
For approval for the board. Right. So this is one that's going to be put up on the website for any public comment, and then brought back for a vote.
And I don't see any reason for us to revise it at this point. So if you're in concurrence, Justin.
Absolutely.
I'll just add with the curriculum committee, we did have a meeting October 20th. I want to...
We have one more policy.
We have one more to go, Mr. Faulkner. Thank you. The next policy that we would like to present is suicide awareness and prevention and response policy per Act 81. This was a, you know, law passed that, basically, it's something we have to do. We have to have this policy in my, in place so that we can, basically, get the ball rolling for programs and training throughout our district. We have worked with the PSBA Solicitors Association as well as Mark Walts, is that correct? Dr. Roberts, with this particular policy, as we talked about the definitions regarding this policy, the procedures regarding this policy, and we're going to put ourselves, you know, in a position in the real, not that distant future, to basically get our staff 6 through 12 trained, as well as interventions throughout the district. But we need the policy in place first to implement the programs that need to follow this act.
And same as the other policy, let's just get it up for a public review. It's obviously an important thing for us to do. And I also forgot, when I was doing my summary, to mention that we had quite a discussion about our graduation requirements as it relates to health and phys ed, and we're probably going to be coming out with a policy revision at the next policy committee meeting for that as well.
Thank you. That's all for policy.
All right. As I was beginning to say, our curriculum, technology, and student affairs committee did meet October 20th. I want to also report that our four new board members were in attendance as well as our full committee. And a few of the topics we, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I recall it was a long night, and we tried to cover as much as possible. The big topics I would say we did cover were the math curriculum changes and how we're working on evaluating the whole program right now. So that was discussed. Secondly, I know we also had a very big discussion on the grading, current grading practice implementation changes that are taking place, and how probably there is quite a bit more professional development that needs to take place for everyone to be on the same page from the staff, for the most part. It's in place, but there's a lot of work to be done. I know, we also, Michael did an update for the Dial program for us. And is what, I'll ask Daniel or Shelley, what else did we briefly discuss that night?
Well, Daniel introduced the ICANN statements at the elementary level, which are pamphlets that were designed for parents so they can understand what their students are learning. But we're also using them instructionally so that students know what ICANN do, and they're posted in classrooms. And we'll be taking those and then converting those into helping us look at how a student would be measured so that we can move toward an elementary report card that matches what we're instructing. So that was one, that's one initiative that he's working on that he mentioned. And I also wanted to mention, because we spent quite a bit of time on this, but November 3rd is our next staff development day. So we're going to be spending quite a bit of time focusing on math. And one of the key things that we're doing right now, in addition to the program...
in addition to the program quality review, which we know will take some time, Matt, Daniel and his, and the instructional coaches and out of the curriculum department have put together some really great resources for teachers all the way K through 12 in mathematics that identify areas on the P S S A keystones that we were proficient in, non-proficient in, broke it down by questions and what the focuses are on, on those particular exams, pulled out exemplars, pulled out past tests, organized it all in one place for teachers so that we can really delve down into the curriculum to take a look at where we might have missed the mark in terms of what we were instructing, and then what we were assessed by, to make some alignment changes, and we're going to be doing that across the board on the 3rd, so I wanted to make mention of that, and we hope to be making some key adjustments that'll, that'll make a difference for us.
I, Shelley, I have a question, and this came from the members in our audience that night of our meeting, I guess there was concern about how, especially at the secondary level, how some of the high school teachers were understanding the difference, how they were supposed to be grading now, do you know if there was, maybe Dr. Ziegler knows more, if there was some, any updates on that?
Yeah, we, since we spent a lot of time on it, well, we had a staff meeting just this week, and Dr. Shirk and Mr. Voorhees took the staff kind of forward in terms of where we're going next, because we have the 15, 16 implementation pieces that are in play, and then we have 16, 17 recommendations that came from the board policy, so we started to work on that. We also did a, I guess we called a report from Power School to look at the building knowledge and the demonstrating knowledge, we see that there were some inconsistencies there, we're working with individual teachers to try to correct that at this point, we had a little bit of conversation about the, the 90/10 and how, what constitute building knowledge and what constitutes demonstrating knowledge, but I think that there obviously is some confusion, and we're working to rectify the confusion among staff at this point, so we're addressing it, it's just, the other thing, just, just for the board to be aware of, the parents that were there that had specific concerns, I asked Dr. Ziegler to follow up specifically with those parents, and I think some of the, there were some misconceptions on the part of the parents as well, that we were able to work through with Dr. Ziegler in, in looking at, you know, what was their issue, and sitting down with both the parents and trying to, you know, to understand, so that we were all on the same page, and that when we were talking with our teachers, that we're not, you know, that we're all looking at the same thing. So, we, we pulled the, the reports, looked at the, what Power School looks like in terms of the grade reporting in certain classes, and then we're making adjustments on an individual basis if, as needed.
I just want to, I mean, I was there too, and certainly participated in the discussion, by the way, there was also a Dial update. Okay. I, I think that, that I continue to hear from parents who are very anxious about our new grading practices, not the 10-point scale, nobody's complaining about that, you know, standard-based grading, and some of the decisions that we've made, and I suspect that that anxiety is going to increase when grades are finalized. I certainly hope that I'm wrong about that, but I suspect that that may be the case, and I think that with hindsight, possibly complicated by the high school project, there's been a bit of a rush with, with implementing this, and I'm a little uncomfortable putting it just on the staff, excuse me, just, just on individual teachers. I understand that, that many teachers have practices that they've had in place for a considerable period of time, and then in the first day of school, or a couple of days before school, they're told you're going to have to change to a new way of doing things, and I guess I'm not surprised that as a result, there are some inconsistencies, and for me, to be perfectly blunt, the jury just isn't out on what we're doing here, I definitely, I voted for it, so, so, you know, I'm taking personal responsibility when I say that, but I'm hopeful that, that things will get smoothed out, and the anxiety will be relieved by, by, by the results that come, but, you know, I just suspect that what's right now just sort of a low hum from a small number of parents is going to increase, and we should be ready for that possibility, so, I think that maybe when we get to next year, my, my personal concerns will be lessened, because some of my concerns are, are transitionary, or transitionary isn't a word, transitory, but I just have to say that, that I share the anxiety, and, and I'm glad that you're dedicating some time to it, to, to get it addressed, but I think we all bear some responsibility here, myself included.
I don't have anything else to add, Justin.
Thank you.
Since we've covered.
Anyone else, other questions or comments? Thank you. All right, with that, we'll make a motion that we adjourn.
New business, just or not new business, I just want to, something to say.
Yeah, you didn't do new business.
It wasn't on my paper.
Anyway, just real quick, don't forget next Wednesday evening at our new gym, Pots Grove versus the Harlem Wizards, 7:00 PM is game time, I believe the door's open at 6:00, do we still have tickets available, do we know?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes, she says, so, come out and let's support our staff, and if anybody can remember to bring the Bengay for me, I'll be happy.
Yeah, I heard a rumor, John, that you're playing.
Yes, I am.
On the staff infection team.
That's correct.
And Jason and I will be there to cheer you on, as well as the rest of the staff.
Depending on how well I do, I get a chance to play again on the 7th of November up in Radnor.
Somebody asked me to do it, but I had the good sense to say no.
Oh, come on. It's fun.
And the proceeds go?
The Pots Grove Education Foundation.
Could I just add on to that, that Amy Morazas is coordinating the parent volunteers, I think they still need some people helping out with spiritware sales and taking tickets and things like that, so contact Amy Morazas, and she'll get you hooked up.
I'll be there to cheer you on, my son told me I'm only allowed to play Santa Claus anymore, I'm not athletic anymore, that's what he told me, so, right, so I'll be rooting for you, John. Is there any other new business? No? All those in favor of a journey? Aye. Have a good night, everyone.